Meeting, February 4th, 2025. We start the meeting. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
And a motion to second. Any corrections or comments?
At the end, for an exec session, we have to add in personnel. So SDCL 125-21 for personnel.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four is invitation for citizens scheduled time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute timeline per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have nobody signed in today, so we move on to item number five, which is consent agenda items, which includes minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorizations, human services report. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number six on the agenda is routine business, approval of the claims. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion to second. Any comments? Additions or corrections? Hearing none. Call or roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Department Head Reports. We have 4H, Sonia.
Good morning.
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 There was a report submitted to your packet, so I won't plan to read that to you, but I'd like to highlight, over the weekend, we had our burger battle. It included a youth livestock literacy component, which, for our 4H members, they need to complete this requirement to show large animals prior to July 1st. So we were able to incorporate an activity with some cooking, but a little education on the forefront of meat cuts and cooking temperatures, the importance of injections, and where you're administering those on your animals. They did a hands-on activity with using syringes and buns and working on the proper injection sites and understanding withdrawal times as young producers of a food product. It's important that they know about those pieces and not just, oh, because mom and dad said this is what we do. It's good for them to have that understanding. And we incorporated a field specialist in the beef area from the Watertown Regional Center. And then, her name is Christina. She's down here on campus. Her title isn't, I don't know her exact title, but her and her grad student were present for that education piece. And then those three ladies served as our judges. We had five teams registered for the burger battle, which, when we scheduled this, didn't even dawn on us that there was, you know, this kind of theme of burger battles around the area, Sioux Falls area, Brookings area, Watertown area. So it was a kind of a complimentary activity to something that was happening in the communities that these individuals lived in. Had a few that got sick and had to back out at the end of the, at the last minute. But it was fun. They didn't need to provide their own beef. We did provide beef for them through a grant that we received from the South Dakota 4H Leaders Association and some donation of beef bucks from the Coteau Hill Catamuns. So that was a nice way to help offset expenses. We had one team that cooked with bison. They called their burger the Buffalo Mac and Cheese Burger. So they actually made their mac and cheese on site. And the other team called their burger the Champion Burger with their homemade champion sauce. They were, in fact, crowned the champions, so it was a fitting title. But the comments back from the judges indicated that although their point varied by one, as far as who was top and who was second, not one of the judges had the same amount of points given to any one of the same categories. So gave some positive feedback, had a good number of kids participate in the livestock literacy piece. So it's good to get those couple of things taken care of for those kiddos early on. We have our Food Fund 4H going on. It's fun. Read the comments. I'm not going to read them all to you, but it's fun to hear what they're saying. In December, they did traditions. January was brunch. The February one has just gone out. And I'm, it's a variety of things. I don't remember the theme off the top of my head. We're working collaboratively as a group of 4H educators in the northeast corner, so one person isn't preparing each month on their own, all six months or whatever. But the idea of this program is that they're cooking at home with their families. And we recognize that family time sometimes is compromised by schedules and activities. And eating at home is another one of those sacrifices that people make because of busy schedules. So it's exciting to read some of the comments that they're providing back in the recipe report, which gives them a little kitchen gadget to use in the next lesson. So if they provide feedback to the three open-ended statements and provide some photos of their experience, then they are rewarded with their next month's packet. It's important that these kids and these young learners know how to cook and how to survive into the future. I'll just tap into my own son, who said to his grandma, "I really didn't like that my mom made me do fashion reviewing special foods, but it's really been very helpful." Everybody gets dressed and everybody likes to eat. And so not only are they learning some kitchen concepts, and I recognize some comments made from those kids as it relates to other project areas, like, "I learned this in special foods, so I knew not to do this now." But it's great to see the photos of them and their families. And I know that selfies are not a thing of the new, but making that time to take a picture, there's a lot of times any one of us has finished the event and said, "Oh, I wish I would have, wish I would have captured that." So that's a real fun activity that's happening right now, allowing those individuals to do that at home when it works for them. Shooting sports is in full swing. We will shoot for match one this weekend. Some of them shot last weekend. The match deadline is February 15th, so it cuts off in the middle of the weekend. So if those groups that are meeting on Sunday, in order to have two tries at the match one, some of them will have their second opportunity this weekend. Some of them did it last weekend. Those that have their classes end on the 15th, then they can still shoot. So we have a larger number of kids participating in shooting sports this year. I provided some numbers in there, so you can see kind of where the growth is. BB gun continues to be a real popular project area, as does archery. In order to advance in the different disciplines of guns, they require that the 4H member get started in BB gun. So they have a sound understanding of the positions and the range commands and are safe before they move up into some of the disciplines that are just a little, just a little bigger. The equipment is heavier and the power behind it is a little more intense, too. So busy, things are busy here in the 4H world and won't necessarily be slowing down either. So are there any questions for me?
Any questions? One question. Your numbers are up and increasing. Is there still a waiting list, or have you accommodated all?
We did get everybody in to at least one discipline.
That's good.
Yeah. We added a number of BB gun lines this year on Sunday, and that was a good move on the part of our 4H volunteers. They've implemented this policy. You need to start at BB gun. So you need to be able to add a little bit more space there to meet that need. So Sunday, there's BB gun starting at 12:45 and going until almost 5 o'clock. So the range is staying busy with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Brian.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, as we continue to set the stage for the year here, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we had a pre-construction meeting on January 23rd at Banner's office in regards to our upcoming Bridge Project 08F4 on County Road 27, a quarter mile south, or mile and a quarter south of Highway 14, or 482nd Avenue. Still an unknown date yet. The contractor, Holloway Construction F, hasn't given us a firm timeline. I would reckon that's probably because of the cold. But when that project does start getting some movement, I'll let you guys know on that. Some future dates here to keep in mind, February 11th, or next week, we have Supplies and Materials bid opening. And also our 2025 asphalt project, February 25th, we have a bid opening for 08X0 on Brookings County Road 35, north of Elkton. February 26th, Minnehaw County, and collaboratively worked with 15 other counties, including Brookings, to formulate our striping. Those bids will be opened in Minnehaw County on February 26th at 10:15 a.m. down there. And lastly, another bid I've been working on is our chip seal bid, and also the courthouse bid on February, or on March 4th, sorry. The courthouse parking lot. Stacy and I have been working together on that. And that's all I have to report.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department, Marty.
Good morning. Just a quick overview of the jail. We have presently 48 inmates in there. Over the weekend, we had a, we peaked at 56 over the weekend, and the weekend's continued to stay busy, you know, probably in a 24-hour, 30-hour. They probably, between other agencies, bring in about 22 people, you know, that probably get bonded out by Monday. So it stays busy always at the jail. We've had, just going over some of the statistics in the civil, in the civil area. Well, first I'll go with 24/7, is that we have 121 participants. 55 people come in twice a day. I have 12 on remote breath test. And I got 12 on SCRAM, and 42 that come in twice a week for UAs. So 24/7 always continues to stay busy. And the civil process side, my deputies cannot thank you guys enough for the, for the civil process deputy, because that takes a lot of, that takes a lot of pressure off them, not having to serve papers half the shift or more, and try to patrol and stuff. And as you can see, the civil process stays busy. In the month of January up to date, well, we had 317 papers that came to the sheriff's office. And, and we got 132 distress warrants, and that's trailer house taxes, you know. And my office does a really good job. Well, we usually get that narrowed down to two or three that we do actually have a sheriff's sale, and maybe not even that many. Sometimes the trailer house is just junk. But my office does a good job of collecting that, and so that keeps, keeps us busy and stuff. So I was in Pierre last week for a couple of days. There's about 22 of us sheriffs there talking about legislative stuff. You know, the hot topics were pretty much the same as that you commissioners that were at the legislative on Saturday talked about the hot topics is property rights and the prison, education stuff. And got to, got to visit with some legislatures and stuff, and it was, it was an interesting week. Anyway, then, just in the process of hiring a deputy, we've taken the test. They went through their first interviews, and so we narrowing it down, and hope I can get somebody hired by the middle of the month. Fire departments have been busy a little bit. We've had a couple of grass fires that, that got away. The two that got away, I think they were burning at a burn barrel, and a spark went off to the grass around the burn barrel. So it's dry out there. It's maybe something we got to look at in the future, Bob. See what, if we don't get some moisture. Other than that, unless you guys have some questions for me.
No. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jacob from Regulationation.
Morning, Commissioner. Just a quick update from our office. The 2025 assessment file that gets sent to qualified Presort for their processing will be sent out today at some point. I anticipate seven to 10 days before they get that out their door, and homeowners in Brookings County start seeing their assessments in their mailbox. To backtrack a little bit on that assessment, we do individual assessments, as you know, and then we do a market analysis at the end of every year, just looking at sales, specifically arms-length transactions are good sales from the previous year. We do our adjustments in geographic locations and house types. And long story short, a year ago, we ended with our assessments at a median value of 88% of actual market value on the sales. This year, we started at about the same point, and we finished at 89%. And what that means for taxpayers is that when their assessment value goes out, they pay tax on 96.5% of it. Being as we ended closer to the median this year on the assessments, they'll pay tax on about 95% of that value moving forward. So middle of the month here, we'll start getting a little bit more busy in the office with inquiries on property values and things like that. That's all I had.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Bob, County Development.
Good morning. The last two weeks, I guess one of the big things is we do have a company called Next Air Energy Resources, LLC. They stopped by the office. They're investigating to see if there's any, any area in Brookings County that they could form a solar farm. This would be a large solar farm. And we informed them that we do have our zoning ordinance that covers solar farms, and that I'd let the county commissioner know that during the area, in case a farmer or a citizen gets contacted by them. They are a legitimate company, and we'd have their contact in our office if anybody wants to verify who this company is. We turned in our local emergency management performance grant on time. We'll have a booth at the home show on Friday and Saturday. Any other county offices that want to put brochures or flyers out on a county, county topic is more than welcome to give them to me, and I'll set them out. The booth is actually covered under our local emergency planning committee grant. We have to do public outreach, so we put up a little, little board showing where all of our local emergency planning committee members are, and hazardous materials, locations throughout the county. And so, and our pre-disaster mitigation plan has been submitted to FEMA for their final approval. We haven't gotten it back yet. And of course, later today, we will be talking about our flood ordinance. And last but not least, I'm working on the Brookings County CO2 Pipeline Advisory Committee, and I had a couple of questions. The, how many county commissioners would you like on that? Would be the first question. Would one suffice?
One or two. I have, any suggestions on board? Two?
Two, okay. And how many township board representatives? It actually goes through four townships. It goes through Aurora, Medary, Oslo, and Trenton townships.
I guess at least one from each township, don't you guys think?
Okay. And let them, yeah, we'll have them submit the names to you guys to select them. Then I've got, I've added the zoning board member. I'll, we'll get the numbers up quite a bit, but we got a zoning board member, East Dakota Water Development District, a representative from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney Representative. We'll let him assist us in who he wants on, we'll talk to you about who he wants on that. And then two members in the public. And what I'll do is I'll type this up and have it to you for the next.
Did you have anybody from the fire department or ambulance?
I do not. I can.
I think one from each of those departments would.
Okay. We'll get working on that, and we'll have it reviewed by the proper people and put in your packet for next, next meeting.
Any other questions, Bob?
Bob, just, you want to inform the public about the red flag warning, you know, no burning when, when that happens, correct?
Yes. When we do get the red flag warning, we send that out through our messaging system, both on the Facebook, which is a regular thing. And I send the message out to our, our system, and then that gets automatically put on Facebook also. So we do it two different ways that we possibly can.
Yeah. Yes, just to remind the public to be smart in these times when we're lacking moisture.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Richard, do you have anything from zoning, or no? Okay. Item number, County Development Department, we have the documents from the finance officers' report. We have some be-it-noted items. They're in the minutes, and the register of deeds, statement of fees collected. It's not 9 o'clock yet, so move on to regular business. Action approved resolution number 25-09, a resolution approving the South Dakota Department of Transportation proposed functional classification. Do I have a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any comments?
This is to reclassify 214th Street to the rural major collector status. This kind of goes off of, Brookings updated their, their transportation planner, their map, I think. And so 214th now can be updated to that status. That's also very important for grant purposes moving forward.
Correct. Any other comments? Hearing none. Call or roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approved resolution number 25-10, a resolution approving the annexation of territories by the city of Volga. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second. Any comments?
This area is on the west side of Volga, in that new development area that they have going on over there. Anytime a municipality wants to annex property, that comes then before the commission to approve as well via resolution.
Does, does anything, does the township have to approve this, too?
I don't think so, no.
Okay. Any other comments? Call or roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action approved abatement number 25-02, an abatement application made by Dan P. Hildebrandt, at UX, in the amount of $328.88 for parcel number 09995-00209-004-00. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any comments?
Yeah, this abatement is related to a modular home that was torn down, removed from the property on April 9th of 2024. So the amount of abatement, $328.88, are the taxes due on that structure only from that point in time through the end of the year.
Okay. Any questions? Further comments? Call or roll, please.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D is action approved abatement number 25-03, an abatement application made by Rodney G. Greve in the amount of $318.19 for parcel number 16980-10948-084-00. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any comments?
Yeah, this is a similar situation here. There was an older home located rurally that was torn down on June 24th of '24. So the amount of abatement is for the taxes due from that day through the end of the year.
Okay. Any other questions? Call or roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approved abatement number 25-08, an abatement application made by Jessica Page, at an amount of $1,542.49 for parcel number 22980-11051-341-00. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any comments?
This one here is about the same thing, other than the house was not torn down. It was moved from Volga Township into Volga City Limits on April 23rd of 2024. So the amount of abatement, again, is, is to this homeowner, related to the taxes from that point in time through the end of the year. We also have the opportunity here in the near future to do an added tax for that. It won't be exactly the same among entities, but we can do an added tax for that property to the homeowner in Volga City Limits.
Okay. Any questions? Call or roll, please.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action approved agreement number 25-09, a letter of agreement between Brookings County and First District Association of Local Governments for the development of the hazardous materials plan. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to second?
Yes, this plan is updated approximately every five years, and the old plan was dated right around 2020, so. right around 2020, so First District is working with us to update it. The, the matching that the county has to do is going to come out of the dues that we pay already to the First District, so it's not any actual money coming from us to get the plan done. And I would have to do a caveat with, with some of the information I've seen coming in on grants, we have to be careful. This one may be pushed back depending upon funding, but as of now, they're requesting that we approve it and request the funding coming in, so I recommend we approve it.
Okay. Any questions? Bob, so in the future, First District would be working on this, correct?
Yes, that is correct, and they work with my office on it. I mean, we have to go around to all, we carry them around to the places. When it says hazardous materials plan, what we help assist them with is they come down and we drive around to all the facilities that's got hazardous materials, so we can document the location, see if they moved where they store their hazardous materials and, and just make sure the plan is, is updated, because it's a plan that in case there's ever a major hazardous materials incident in Brookings County, we have to be able to, to protect our first responders, and this is how, how we do it, by doing this plan every so many years, we go into the facilities and we can see where the hazardous materials are stored, and this plan's also shared with the first responders, the fire departments to allow them to fight fires in these areas.
Okay. Any questions? Other comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
It is nine o'clock, we'll go back to our scheduled agenda items. Item A is the second reading, reading and public hearing of ordinance 2025-01, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-01, the Brookings County zoning ordinance as amended. I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. At this time, I would open the public hearing. If there'd be any proponents that would like to speak to this?
Yes, Commissioner, I got Richard Haugen, my deputy director for the County Development Department here also. This ordinance we, we propose to be passed is an update of our floodplain overlay district, and the Federal Emergency Management Agency came through and they updated our, our flood insurance rate maps, known as the firm, and we took our existing ordinance and updated it and had to send it into FEMA to get their approval of it, so all the language that, that you see in the actual document itself comes from Federal Emergency Management Agency. And this allows our, our citizens in Brookings County to, if they do have to buy flood insurance by us participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, it allows Brookings County citizens to get a discount on their flood insurance when they do, do require it. We believe that the science behind developing the ordinance is, is the best, best science that there is, and we have notified, there are some, some properties in Brookings County that may be, that will be affected by this ordinance update, and we understand that, and we've sent letters out to all those individuals, and we've, we've facilitated contact of some of those individuals with FEMA themselves, Federal Emergency Management Agency, to try to, try to mitigate whatever, whatever possibilities we could, and it is what it is. Unfortunately, we, if we don't, do not adopt these changes, then Brookings County, the flood rate insurance throughout the whole county would increase, so. We developed it, like I said, with the first planning district helped us do some of the changes to it, and then of course it was sent to FEMA itself and the Plannings Board, we heard, heard these changes and unanimously adopted or passed the changes and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve.
Okay.
Richard, do you have anything to add?
No.
Any questions, Bob?
Yeah, I guess, could you just explain a little bit more, what is the effects on these landowners that are, they, they're required to purchase flood insurance now, or they didn't before, or there's a designation on their land, or what exactly is the effect on these? You said there, there was affected landowners.
Well, what they did is they used what's known as LiDAR, which is side imaging radar, to get a accurate detail of the elevations in Brookings County, and I believe there was 11 property owners that were affected, and was it six? Five or six actually was put back into the floodplain after they had come out of it, mainly due to the elevations of, of, of the river. The original data for the, for the flooding was 1969, the record of flood in 1969, and there was always spot elevations in between there on our LOMAs, letters of map amendment that they've done, and this time FEMA came through and, and got the more accurate elevations, and they just, they determined that some of the properties were just literally set in too low and they're flood prone, so that's, that's the changes. We did send letters out to each affected individual.
Have you heard back from any of them? They're aware of this?
Oh, by all means. And we, and we had them contact FEMA themselves, some of them came in and quite, quite, you know, we had this done and we had it done professionally, and that's fine. If, if the, the science shows that they are not flood prone, then FEMA, FEMA has the ability to take that and take them back out, but from what I hear, none of the appeals so far have taken effect.
But any of these properties affected by some of the levy work we're doing in Midary Township?
No, no, sir.
And the last, Richard Haugen, Deputy Director for the, this, the last floodplain update was 2008, was when the last firm, and our current zoning, zoning ordinance reflects that date, so this is bringing that up, you know, 15 plus years with new data and information to, for this, so.
Do you guys have a schedule on when you'll be updating this periodically? Is it like every 10 years or anything like that, or is it?
Not really. A zoning ordinance is a living document referred to, and our comprehensive plan, I believe, is dated 2016, so it's going to be due for, for an update. Typically, we update the, the, we do minor updates. This is actually, to me, a major update because of the floodplain, but usually we do minor updates once or twice a year to, just for conditional uses or various things like that. But I would say it's probably going to be 2026, we're going to tackle the comprehensive plan. Well, actually, we talked earlier about the pipeline review committee. We're looking, we're going to look at the, start looking at the comprehensive plan there, and anything that comes out of that committee, we're going to keep on file for when we update the regular comprehensive plan, so. I mean, it's a, it's a living document, both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. As, as things change in the county and development changes and, and the wishes of the County Commission changes, then we need to look at the ordinance, and, and there are state laws on, on passing ordinances and comprehensive plans.
Very good. Bob, on those five or six that you said that were added into that floodplain, if they want to dispute that, their only avenue is to go right to FEMA?
Yes.
Where there's nothing that's done on the county level?
No. What it, what it requires, anytime you're dealing with the floodplain management program, it takes a certified engineer or professional engineer, and we do not have a professional engineer on staff, so we, we could not facilitate that.
Do we have any FEMA representatives in this area?
There might be one in Pierre that's a liaison to our Office of Emergency Management, but Region 8 out of Denver, Colorado is our flood, we've got a state floodplain manager who's a South Dakota state employee, Mark Macy, he's out of the Office of Emergency Management in Pierre, and then the, the region is, is Denver, Colorado, FEMA Region 8, they take care of Utah, Montana, Wyoming, North Dakota, South Dakota, and Colorado.
Any other question, Bob? Any other proponents that would like to speak on behalf? Any other proponents? Okay, opponents? Is there any opponents? Any opponents? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, entertain any other comments from the board? Hearing none, we call the roll, please.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is banner and associated update on City of White 2025 projects. They will not be here today. Okay. We'll move on to legislative audit, Jeff Schaefer, would like to come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like I say, my name is Jeff Schaefer, I'm with Department of Legislative Audit, and we finished the 2023 fiscal audit, and it's in its final stages and ready to be released. You've all been supplied with a letter, there's on the second page, there's a couple items I'd like to discuss with you, not of any terrible importance, but important enough to bring to your attention. If you have any questions on anything as we go along, please ask. The first item there says internal controls over management of TIF districts were inadequate resulting in over taxpayers to tax, over taxation to taxpayers. Last year, there was a written comment on that, had to do with a couple of TIFs out of Volga. Same situation kind of existed this past for 23, but from our closing conference until the, there was no time to do any changes to it on behalf of the county, so they would just bring it to their attention. There was no time for them to change. Actually, what they've done now is that they've kind of strengthened the controls over it, they're looking at the dates, monitoring that stuff, and the county would have knowledge of that information before anybody else. So it just, just take a little time to put some sort of sheet together to keep track of what's coming due shortly, so this doesn't run. It's not uncommon to have them go over for part of a year, but for, you know, but that's not uncommon, but it's, it does happen, and any questions you guys might have on that?
Any questions in the board?
No.
Okay. So I, it's effectively been implemented, is what the finding is, so. The second item was a custodial fund exists called the Brookings Fire Association Fund, Fund 759. This fund consists entirely of general fund cash. We recommend the cash be maintained in the general fund and a fund balance assigned for the Brookings County Fire Association. I believe what you've done is you budgeted for, I can't remember what line item it is, and for fire associations, and if it's say, let's say a $300,000 budget, and you only spend $100,000 of it, you move the dollars that were budgeted there to the custodial funds. Custodial funds are primarily, well, exclusively used for entities that not, do not consist of the government. You're holding for schools and so on, and townships and therefore, those type of things. So this should be probably, I, I would recommend that you keep this in general fund at the end of the year. You can assign it in your general fund for fire association purposes and, and maintain it in the general fund, and just expand it in that way. Kind of in the same manner you're doing now, but, but keep it all within the general fund. Stacy looks perplexed. We can have, we, we can work it out, so, so, okay. But those are really only two really items that I had. If any questions about the audit?
No.
At all?
So would you recommend that the fireman's funds be moved completely out of the county into their own account?
Well, we were saying here that if you want to have control of those dollars, and it's your county, it's your dollars to maintain, you would just maintain it within the general fund. Right now, it's moving, it's in a part of the county, but it's in a custodial funds, which are funds held for other individuals. I mean, by, it's, it's not your money, it's the school district's money, it's taxation money that's been collected, put there for townships and so on and so forth. This is actually the county's money. So if you just kept it in the general fund and you assigned that balance in there, kind of restricted it, I shouldn't say restricted it, but you segregate it, as these, these dollars are by commission intent to use for fire association purposes, you can do that just as, as an assignment of fund balance. And then whenever something comes up, you say, we're going to fund this, and then we just reduce that assignment correspondingly, you know, and you can expand it that way.
So, excuse me if I'm using the wrong terms, but, so instead of having a separate account, we just have to have the funds earmarked in our general account?
That's correct.
However, this is the only non-mandated entity that we would be doing that for, and it's a lot of extra bookkeeping on the finance office and my part to do it that way, so I think what we are still recommending as a staff recommendation is just to pay that out and have that, the fire association track their money, as we do any other non-mandated entity that we give money for.
Which is allowable, yes.
Okay. Now, does that leave questions as far as the auditability of that, those funds, once they leave us then? I mean, there's no entity that's going to audit and know exactly where those funds are being used and how they're being directed at that point?
That's, that's entirely possible, there probably wouldn't be, need to be an audit.
That wouldn't be an extension of your audit?
It would not.
But the fire, the association, treasurer, would, they, they present the budget to us every year, they would have, they bring each department's requests really when they do that budget, but is a way to track it that?
They're tracking it themselves now, it's just that the money was staying with the county. They were tracking it, they knew which departments had what amount of, you know, piece of that pie. We didn't necessarily even know that, we just had a lump sum in our funds. They were tracking it on their end and had it parsed out by department.
And I think they're doing a very good job of doing that.
Yes. I mean, we've, we have, you know, checks and balances with them, we check with them all the time, and it seems like we always, we've always matched what we have versus what they think we should have, is always balanced, so. We don't, anytime, I mean, the commission has these discretionary funds that we, we pay out to a number of non-mandated entities throughout the year. Brookings Behavioral Health, Domestic Abuse Shelter, Advance, Beta, just to name a few. Once those dollars, they're, those entities can use those dollars however they see fit. This would be the same way with the fire association, they would be able to use those dollars however they see fit, and they track them on their end, kind of by department. They get so much, each department gets so much of the, the funds that we provide.
We were not questioning the use of the dollars or what they're used for in any fashion, it's just where it's at.
Yep.
You know, it would still be managed, it could be managed through the general fund if you like.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Well, that's really all I have, I think everybody did, the audit went really well, and so they did a good job down there, so, so I'll let you know that, and if you have any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe item, item number G is action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expense incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for the Brookings Behavioral Health CDBG grant in the amount of $217,984.84 to General Ledger Line 101-4-111-4293. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second, any comments?
I think I've stated this before, we have the CDBG grant for the Brookings Behavioral Health Construction Project. The county is basically the conduit for those grant funds from the state, so we're working with First District Association on this, and we get pay requests, which I believe was just approved at the last meeting, and then that gets sent off to the state, the state reimburses the county, and then we supplement our budget, and eventually these dollars, you'll see a claim go out to Brookings Behavioral Health, who pays the bills for the construction project. So we're basically just kind of a conduit for the money. for the money. But there's several processes that we have to go through in order to make that happen each time.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item H is action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expenses incurred and reimbursement made to Brookings County for an overpayment of fees in the amount of $2,250 to General Ledger Line 101-4-130-4290. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Comments?
This bill was paid twice. I think it came both to the finance office and to the state's attorney's office, and both paid it. But we have received the check, and it got reimbursed back for one of the, one of the payment amounts.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item I, action approved outside employment request number 2025-01. Do I have motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item J, action to approve the updated bylaws for the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center Advisory Board. Do I have motion approved?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion second. Comments?
These were approved by the advisory board at their meeting a week ago, yesterday, last Monday. We, the advisory board voted to basically get, eliminate the archery range committee and the pistol range committee. Those two committees were made, kind of internal committees made up of folks out there. The archery range committee never really fully developed. We had, you know, a couple people who are keeping track of things on the archery range for us. And one of them is on the advisory board, but that committee really never met, never could get membership really solidly in place. The pistol range committee started off strong with members. And then, I believe it was last year, I don't think they had a meeting to even have a quorum last year, to make any decisions last year. And so, with the advice from Arden Siegel, was the member on the advisory board that was also on that pistol range committee, we just decided to get rid of those two committees and bring everything back just to the advisory board. So, you'll see the edits, the membership edits that are on the screen in front of you are to change the titles of those members that are on the advisory board. So, instead of saying pistol range committee member or archery range committee member, it's just archery ranger, pistol range representative. Still spells out those terms. And then, later on in the document, you'll see everything, all the strikeouts for both of those standing committees. And once again, you know, as far as RSOs, the pistol range committee would approve RSOs as well. But now, that will come back to the advisory board to do that. And then, as they're added, we will, you'll be seeing those. But with all of those changes and edits, the advisory board did approve those updated bylaws at their meeting last week.
Any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine is commission department director report.
Okay. So, we are hosting the 10-county, or the Sioux Valley Association, Sioux Valley Commissioners Association meeting in April, on April 2nd, at the BCOAC. I'm wondering if there's anything else on the agenda. You know, typically, what's on the agenda is just some updates from usually someone that's from the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is there and gives an update. Maybe a few other of our, like, SML work comp people once in a while will show up. Area legislators are invited, and there is a discussion there with them. Usually, this April 1 is kind of a recap of the session. So, we try to get legislators that are not required to attend. So, I guess you never know exactly who will be able to be there and give information. But wondering if there's anything else that you would like to see on the agenda. I know at the last meeting, when we went up to Redfield, they had their sheriff speak about a program, kind of a joint cooperative agreement, or joint cooperative program that they have going on with coverage up there, and gave just a little 10, 15-minute presentation on that. Is there something like that that you want to see on that agenda that we'd want to share with our area counties?
We got time to...
We do have time to think about it, but we will be getting, I work with First District to get the agenda out. So, we'll want to be doing that because we'll also have, just have a lot of planning to do with that, with meal prep and whatnot. So, I would say probably within the next, probably before the next meeting, we'll need to know. I know that seems very early, but we need to get the information out, and then RSVP's back for meals and whatnot. So, we need to give the other counties time. So, if there's any thoughts on that in the next week or so, let me know. The next is Spring Workshop, coming up April 9th and 10th. And I believe, did I have the agenda on there? I think it starts at, so on Wednesday, it starts at 8:30. I believe we do have hotel rooms out there for Tuesday night and Wednesday night. It wraps up at about 3 o'clock on Thursday, so able to get home that evening. I need to know who is going to attend because I need to get registration sent in and back. If you know you're going to attend?
Yeah.
Yes. I know you're not. Dave, are you able to go?
To be determined.
Yes, I'm going. Yes.
Okay. Doug, are you planning to go?
There's still going to be snow on the ground, right?
You can wear boots.
I'll try and make it, yeah.
Okay. Kelly? Okay. We also received notice of another tax or a TIF, number 17, for the city of Brookings this time. I believe that that is actually this evening is that public hearing at 5:30. And I know Lori had sent out information, our finance officer, discussing, you know, the possibility of charging for TIFs moving forward. I don't know, Jacob can maybe speak to it a little bit more about the amount of work these create for the finance office and the equalization department. If you would like to see a proposed resolution to start charging a fee for these, let me know. We have, several counties have provided, we've gotten examples that, from other counties that have done this. So, thoughts? Yes?
Yeah, I guess I'd be interested in looking at those.
Yeah. Okay. And then, last but not least, I had provided the county strategic plan in with my report. I didn't have any updates for it at this time. I think we reviewed it pretty, with department heads and whatnot, at the, at last year at about this time. So, take a look at it. I didn't have any, like I said, I didn't have any changes at this time. But if you had any comments or questions on that, we can sure visit with that, about that. Other than that, just some upcoming dates that we have. Go back to my, looking a little bit farther out here. Nothing coming up here too soon in January, but President's Day, Monday, the 17th of February, offices will be closed. Right about that time, too, we should note that the finance office will not be able to process motor vehicle transactions. So, I think it's like the 12th, 13th, 13th and 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th. So, it's like that Thursday, Friday, and the Tuesday after President's Day as well. So, that weekend right around President's Day, there's a new motor vehicle system being implemented at the state level. So, there will be this transition time. So, the finance office will be open for other business, but not able to do any motor vehicle transactions at that time. I think I have those dates right. I think it was right around President's Day. So, for those public listening, keep that in mind. If you are a February renewal, get in sooner rather than later, is my advice. Coming up a little bit later in February, we have the Pipeline, South Dakota Pipeline Association Response Training. That's at the Dakota Bank Center. The NACO Ledge Conference, Commissioner Vanderwall is attending that. Not right now, next month. Kelly and I had a conversation about that. And then, equalization boards, keep that in mind. That is kind of an extra Tuesday. It's not a commission meeting day, but it is, it is a commission meeting day of sorts, because you convene as the equalization board to go through that on the 8th. And then, that same day, probably headed out to Pierre, for those of us going out to Pierre for Spring Workshop, leaving Tuesday, the 8th, and then coming back on, it should be actually probably Wednesday, Thursday, the 9th and 10th. So, for workshop. And that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Okay. State's Attorney's Office report. Item number 11 is commissioner reports and discussion items. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. On Thursday, January 23, I attended the quarterly 911 meeting here in this building. And then, yesterday, I had a conversation with a concerned citizen. And that's my report. Thank you.
Commissioner Post?
Yes, thank you. On the 22nd, I went to Pierre and took along some of the activities and talked to other legislators and stuff out in Pierre. That was on January 22nd. Also, on the 1st of February, I attended a forum here. And I just returned yesterday. I was back out in Pierre again over the weekend and had a chance to visit with some of the local legislators.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you. On the 27th, I had the hospital board meeting. Continue to enjoy that. Lots to learn there. On the 28th, I met with several different department heads about some issues that are, need to be dealt with. And then, again, on the 30th, some different department heads. And on the 1st, the legislative conference here in this room.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hosler?
Yeah. So, on the 22nd, I attended Brookings Day in the Capitol. I think that was after our last meeting. It was well-attended. Got a chance to visit with quite a few of the legislators out there and see some of the goings-on and get some updates. On the 27th, the BCOAC Advisory Board meeting, of course, we had that little review and what the bylaws and that, and are excited to welcome our new director on the 10th. So, that will be, that will be something nice. That is my report.
Okay. On the 22nd, I also went to Brookings Day at the legislature in Pierre. On the 23rd, our E911 meeting. And on the 27th, the BCOAC Advisory Board Committee meeting. With that, move on to item number 12, executive session. It's according to South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, parentheses 1, you have motion to enter an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.